Seven o'clock, we have a continued public hearing. Stormwater and Site Plan Administrative Review, Common Driveway 16, 18 through 20, Mann Hill Road.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the Stormwater Special Permit and Common Driveway Site Plan Review for 16, 18, and 20 until March 26, 2020 at 7:00 PM, and to continue the town for action for filing with the town clerk until April 13, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those favor.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, now we have Design Review Committee interview.
Seven oh two.
At seven oh two. Christopher, I take it, Christopher Coogan?
Yes.
Come on, on up. Welcome. Identify yourself, where you live, and give us a rundown, and why do you want to be a Design Review Committee?
Sure. My name's Christopher Coogan. I live at 9 Newfield Road with my wife and two kids. Moved here just a couple of years ago. We formerly lived in Hingham. We are New Englanders at heart, despite the fact being born and raised in Providence, Rhode Island, so. But most recently, we came back from Charleston, South Carolina, and we wanted to be back, and we love-
Just to time for the cold weather?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, water skiers are now skiers in our family, so. But I think that I threw my hat into the ring here because it was something I wanted to do. I wanted to get part and be part of the community here in Situate. I've always preached to my wife that I ingrained myself in community. I was a Providence police officer. Oddly enough, it took a turn and worked my way into real estate management after that, so, upon my retirement. Two very different things, most would think, until you start dealing with people again and find out that what you're doing is managing expectations and personalities. So, I certainly understand what it's like to sit in front of or slightly above people and listen to them wish upon something. So, but again, it was all about being part of the community, being able to give something back. When we lived in Hingham, we spent more time in Situate, and that was probably because we didn't have kids and we were fond of TK O'Malley's, but that's another story.
Are you familiar with the Design Review Committee?
I am.
You are. Have you been to any of the meetings?
I have not.
You have not. And how do you feel that your background and experience will help the Design Review Committee?
My first foray into management, real estate management, in South Carolina was with Land Tech Development and, more specifically, Southern Community Services, and we managed a property that, based on size and population, would have been about the 13th largest town in South Carolina. And at that point, I was doing just this. I was the Architectural Review Chairman. I was the one who accepted the plans, made the recommendations, ran the meetings with the, excuse me, with the architects, with the developers, and heard the arguments of and for the residents who were building in there. Or, I'm sorry, it wasn't just the residents either, it was also large commercial builders as well.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, looking through your work experience, as I understand it, you picked it up after it was already developed?
It was in the middle. No, no, we weren't done. It's probably not done now. Park West down in Charleston, I'm sorry, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina.
Because you left?
No. It's quite a large job, but I would say I came in at 75% completion, maybe, maybe a little bit less, and my couple of years there, we got it up to roughly 90% completion. But I think more land was, in fact, purchased that we knew was coming, so. As I said, I left Mike Heard, who was the general manager, the man above me, with a little bit more work to do.
Okay. I'm all set.
Penn?
So, are you familiar with our issues with our historic aspects of the town and how we're having problems retaining our historic aspects of the town?
I'm sorry?
Are you familiar with the issues that we have surrounding our historic elements in the town?
No, not in the minutia of these problems, but, you know, what you get from the ledger, what you get from Wicked Local, and what you see, just from what you get, maybe having a coffee down at Front Street and between listening and talking to others, what they're going through, who's going through what, maybe even at a soccer game with my daughter, they find out.
So, you've been around here for a while, since you were in Hingham, you told us you'd be here a lot?
Yes.
One of my concerns that we're losing our quietness in the town of Situate, that we're losing to these big developments, so my interest would be how do you maintain that historical aspect when you're going into these large projects that we have undertaken in the town such as Toll Brothers, for example, or even on Dripley, the new project that's going to be developed, or our country way?
I think you have to put conditions upon the development itself, and that has to be to conform. You know, growth for the sake of growth is, and I hope I'm not insulting anybody, but growth for the sake of growth is usually just a money grab. But if it's done properly, with the idea of being sustainable, with the idea of fitting into an already established community, then you can really achieve something good, and that's why we chose Situate, because it is your quintessential, or should be your quintessential Massachusetts, New England, seacoast town.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, maybe you could, I'm intrigued by this Mount Pleasant work that you did. Can you kind of explain the role? It sounds like you were reviewing submittals from developers-
Yes.
-for master communities, and what was the, what were the standards of review and all of that? Was that something that was created in regulation, or how was that approached? I'm not sure I understand it.
Sure. It was, the first wave of, the first wave of development had to pass town ordinance first. It had to be, but we were a master development, we had a master community association which had its architectural review guidelines that had to be met, and like-
I get it now.
Like here, you want that coastal, you want that Situate feel. Down there, it was that southern feel. You had to have, down to the detail of the proper shutter dogs on your shutters.
So, that you were for the master developer in sort of implementing their design criteria, then, basically?
Yeah. Coming aboard, when I did, it was already developed, so I was more or less enforcing. I was taking the applications, I was taking the blueprints, I was marking them up and having them ready for our weekly reviews.
And in those kinds of circumstances, can you give me just sort of an example of how you ran into a, maybe a controversial development, and how it got addressed and how you helped address it?
Sure. The CFO of, what's the pizza place? Uno? Uno Pizzeria, whichever one? The CFO was a French gentleman who was developing on Park Island. Park Island was actually gated, closed off. The only way on and off the island was a bridge, and the criteria there was usually $3 million minimum. With that, they had the same guidelines as we do in the master development as well. His first submission came over, and it was state-of-the-art, it was as modern as the Guggenheim, and maybe something you guys know about over there, I guess that's Third Cliff.
Oh, the cement building.
Yeah, exactly. So, and that's, you know, an awful lot of glass, an awful lot of steel, very Superman-esque. You know, it was not, not conformant, and we went around it, and we had to keep going back and forth, and usually it was through and against their attorneys until, you know, they said. This is why, you know, hopefully you pick a community like this, because you understand what the criteria is and what the expectation. And once you settle that, then you move forward. They didn't. They didn't want to accept it, and it was best for them to move on.
Interesting.
Penn?
Again, having visited and lived in Situate now for a while, obviously you've noticed there's a lot of growth and development and change going on, like in most of eastern Massachusetts and New England. What, in your opinion, I guess from having reviewed kind of like the charge and the roles of the Designer Review Committee, what are some developments or projects going on in town now that you kind of think of could have been done a little bit better from a Designer Review perspective, and also what are ones that you think were done well and that you kind of are fully on board with how it went?
I would go to the Toll House, the Toll Brothers Development. I'd like to see, I would like to have seen what their submissions were, what their expectations and what they were asked for. At first blush, I think it's too much, particularly when you have issues down in that area such as the Brown Water. So, the pressure and usage put on the system in an area like that is only going to worsen, I would imagine. I don't think it's going to get any better. So, that's one. I'd like to flip it a bit, because, and I'll be very honest with you, I don't think I can effectively answer the question, so I'd like to flip it a bit and say what I'd like to do or see out of North Situate, and how that should be made and developed in a manner that should be more welcoming, that should be more family-oriented, walking-oriented. There's parking there now, there's, you know, how about keeping the people coming off the trains there, maybe, you know, even if it's only a Thursday or Friday night for, you know, a quick cocktail or something, or maybe there is a restaurant there in which they can go. Maybe we can do something with that strip mall where the new Dribbles is, and then the gym over there. That's, and I saw, but viable businesses are in there. That's the kind of, and North Situate is maybe, a lot of people come to these, and I'll admit, a lot of people come and ask to be part of something like this because they have their own personal agenda, and one of them for me would in fact be, let's do something better with North Situate. That'd be, that'd be one thing that helped push me and motivate me to throw my hat in the ring. So, not an effective question, I'm sorry, answer, but-
No, that's-
Hopefully it gets through what I'm hoping for and what I would like to do and see done.
Thanks.
Have you been to any of the meetings that have been held in regards to North Situate yet?
I have not. My lesson came from getting tires done, so I don't think I have to explain where I was. And a friendship with a business owner, my wife's a friend with a business owner also there. So, a lot has come with, you know, yeah, a little contact, just right around the dinner table, or, like I said, having some tires put on, so.
All right. Do you have any questions for us?
I do not. I just want to thank everybody again for giving me a second opportunity. I do apologize not being able to make the first meeting. I was happy to get a chance, so, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
And thank you.
Thank you for putting your hand up, too.
Yes.
Well, I do have a question, and I'm sorry, if I could go, please, if I, please, could go back. Would, is there a timeframe when you will make a decision?
I think we will probably make a decision, hopefully later tonight, later tonight. Yeah. Later tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. See, we now have an informal discussion for the PJ Seaverman In-Line Skate Rink.
I have four copies. Can you guys share?
Sure.
I have one, and I'm all set. Yeah, I'm all right.
A lot of, I'm sure we'll read this while we're sitting here.
Hi, my name's Anna Shay. 138 Hollitt Street. So, I am here, I have been to a few CPC meetings. You guys can see the application in front of you is for the PJ Seaverman In-Line Rink. I'm trying to get it repaired, back to usable condition. Right now, it's not in the greatest condition, so Mrs. Burbine suggested that I come and talk to you guys and just kind of answer any questions that you have, or comments, anything like that. I included pictures there, and the application that I resubmitted with a little bit more money. Our plan right now is to donate the $10,000 to a maintenance fund to, in order to upkeep the rink after the work's done, if it goes for approval, so.
And I asked Anna to come in, as you know, I'm on CPC as the liaison from planning, just so that everybody knows what's going on, and I'm a big believer in letting people know what's happening. And basically, if I understand this correctly, other than revamping the rink-
Yep.
-nothing is changing?
No.
There's no additional parking, there's no-
Everything's the same.
Everything is exactly, exactly the same.
Right.
Except it will be sparkling new.
Yes. Yes. That's hopefully what my, the plan is.
Okay. So, I'll open it up to the board. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Sure.
It looks like it's in quite the disrepair, and I've seen it before, having used the crumbling tennis courts over there, too.
Yep.
But who owns this rink? Is this school?
So, we gifted it to the town in 1996, in the memory of my brother. His search ended in April, and we did our last fundraiser in March, so with all the funds that we had left over, we made the rink and then gifted it to the town.
So, it's town property?
So, it's town-owned, yep.
Yep. And the town's responsible for maintaining it?
That's correct, yeah. That's how it was. I don't have the minutes, and I was only 15 when we built it, so I don't really know the details, but I talked to Joe Norton, and I just talked to a few people that were, you know, in the game then, and they said that, yeah, that was part of the, part of the deal. And when I called over to CPC, not to CPC, to DPW to start inquiring about this, because I really didn't know where to start, they had said that they think it's in the plan, but then, just by looking at it, I don't think, I think it's just been-
Yeah, you know, what concerns me is that it doesn't look like it's gotten a heck of a lot of maintenance, right?
Right.
And even if we restore it, like, is anybody going to take responsibility for maintaining this?
So, the $10,000 is going to a fund in, at the town that is going to be used to maintain the rink, whether it's the DPW that maintains it or an outside contractor. I imagine that it's not going to take too much maintenance, because once it's done, you know, I think maybe the crack in the surface had to do with just not weed whacking it, or, you know what I mean? Just over time, frost, things like that. So, the surface that I actually looked into was tiles, so when there's a crack or something like that, you only have to replace the tiles, not the whole surface. So, it, you know, cuts down on the cost quite a bit. Yeah, so that's the plan so far.
Rebecca? How, when did you guys, when was this built?
In 1996.
Okay, so it's been a while.
Yeah, or actually 97, because it was founded in 96, so we started 97, sort of in 97.
Twenty-two years, twenty-three years.
So, there's an application, is that different from the $10,000? The application-
So, the $10,000-
$10,000 is just for maintenance?
Yeah, so you'll see a list.
I just don't have everything in front of me, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so in that packet, there's a list, it just says a list of donations that we've made, and it's, we go through the, we have, we're the Friends of Situate Recreation. We support recreation activities with all the money that we've raised in his memory.
Okay.
And I just actually recently started a hockey tournament last year.
Yep.
We stopped the golf tournament four years ago, so I started the hockey tournament, and it was a success. I raised $15,000, and hopefully this year, we'll raise another 25, is my goal. So, and that's happening in May, so all that money is going to go towards any, you know, future needs, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yep.
I suspect you're right, is that it's taken, you know, years of neglect so that you get to a place where you have to do capital repairs.
Well, I came up with my kids to teach one of them how to ride a bike, and I was like floored, because I just hadn't been up here. It just, my kids, you know, just started riding bikes, and they just, you know, so I was really shocked at the condition, and that's what kind of like put the fire under me to get going, so, yeah.
All right, yes.
I just wanted to-
Just identify, please, identify yourself.
Oh, Lymnus Seaverman, 228 Eagle Dam Road. And I just wanted to say that through the golf tournament about 10 years ago, it was in need of some major repairs, and with the money that we had raised that year, we were able to resurface it and paint it and do all of that. As Anna said, as you can see now, it lasted 10 years.
Yeah. Is there a standard set of sort of maintenance requirements that need to be done every year?
You know, I think it's like anything, you know, you build it, and if it sits there for 24 years and nothing's done besides paint, that kind of thing, it's wood, you know, the boards are wood, they fall apart, and it's had a lot of use, thankfully.
That's good.
You know, one thing, if it sits there and falls apart when nobody uses it, but the reason it's falling apart is because it is so well-used, so.
Penn?
What's the estimated total cost for the renovations?
Three, I put $315,000 to be safe, because when I got my quotes, I didn't get them prevailing wage.
Okay.
So, I just added the 33% onto it, and that's what I came up with, yeah.
Okay, so $315,000, just to clarify.
Yeah, yep.
And do you have any figures on the current, like, usage or projected future usage of the-
In terms of, like, who uses it?
Yeah, I guess generally, like, I, because for full disclosure, when I grew up, it was when it was built.
Yeah.
And I know that we played a lot of floor, or like, roller hockey and stuff out there, but I don't, I'm so far removed from that, I don't know how many kids are coming and going these days, and how many people are using it.
So, according to Mara at Recreation, it's the most-used facility that we have.
From a recreation perspective?
So, like, from a recreation perspective, we have, it's the hockey tournament uses, I mean, the hockey team uses it for their first tryouts, I guess, that's a tradition. The lacrosse team uses it when there's snow on the field, they'll shovel it and use it just for like dry land kind of thing. The gym classes use it, all, it's just a whole mix of people. I know the Donatos use it to put on like a hockey clinic in the summer, and I feel like if it was in better shape, we could probably use it in, for profitability. I mean, the recreation department could put on, we used to do an all-sports festival over there, and it was a great moneymaker, you know, it was, they used it for a fundraiser, so.
There's a lot of kids in the afternoon, I would say, after school.
Yeah, and just in that area, like with the basketball courts and the skate park and all that stuff, they're just, you know, everywhere, so.
Okay. Bill?
What are you looking for, Russ?
I'm just looking to-
For support?
Yeah, just for support and to be able to answer any questions that you had, and suggestions are welcome. I'm new to this, so.
You're doing very well.
Thank you.
The fact that you've sort of identified and have some funding for maintenance, I think is huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we run into this all the time, where they just keep getting worse and worse until you have to spend a million dollars instead of $10,000.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
I think that's, I think that's very impressive.
It is.
The only concern I have is, who's going to make sure that that $10,000 goes to where it's supposed to go? I mean, who?
Right.
You know, so we have this problem with fields, and who's supposed to take care of stuff, so you have an identified amount of money, but we don't have an identified gatekeeper, so to speak. And what we think is the DPW?
I believe, yeah, when I went to the selectmen's meeting, that's what they said, and they suggested to put the money aside. The town holds the money, and they do what they do with the money.
So, you want to check to the town?
Exactly, yeah. So, I donate the money to the town, to this fund that's only for PJ's Rink and will only be used for PJ's Rink.
So, is that why I don't-
They have a dedicated fund?
Yeah.
So, we have to make sure.
That's what they would do.
We should make sure.
It's a separate fund.
Too easy for it to end up in the general fund.
Yeah, that's, that's my question, is to make sure that there's a dedicated line.
Yeah, they said they would keep it in like a separate-
And I think Nancy Hall is usually right on top of that.
Yeah.
So, I don't think that that's anything that we need to be concerned about, and because you'll be using it more and more-
Right.
-you will be more cognizant of what needs to be done.
Right, exactly.
And you are looking for a letter from, of support from us? How do you all feel about that? Could we support this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's great.
You're all set.
All right. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I would also say we ought to support the notion of a-
Maintenance.
-of a dedicated maintenance fund for the rink only.
Yes, okay.
As part of our letter of support.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate you coming in. Good job, Anna.
Thank you.
Get this one done, we'll give you another one.
All right. All right, our next item is an informal discussion with the Historical Commission. Doug Smith?
Yes, good evening.
Evening.
How are we doing tonight?
We are quite well. So, if you will just identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Doug Smith. I'm the chairman of the Situate Historical Commission.
Thank you. All right, we are here to talk about historic preservation policy.
Yes.
Because we have issues, that people come in and they want to have a building for the public good or whatever, and then it turns out to be not what we had thought it would be.
Correct.
So, case in point, 90 and final.
Yes.
So, what are your thoughts on all of this?
So, in an informal discussion with Karen, you know, we were talking about what makes something historic, so, and what does preservation of a historic structure look like? So, that kind of gets widely interpreted, I think, by anybody who's applying for a special permit, and I just think if we take an opportunity to think about it, we may be able to bring some structure and guidance to it. So, if someone was applying for a special permit, and they felt that historic preservation was a piece of the special permit, the reason for granting it, you could set some sort of guardrails and guidelines, so the person getting that special permit would know exactly what they're required to do in order to maintain the historic preservation and therefore benefit the public by doing so. I think at times, again, it kind of gets widely interpreted as to what is still historic. Is it a complete restoration of a building? Is it a renovation of a building? Is it just keeping the frame of the building and building around it? You know, there's a lot of sort of ways people look at that, and what we were sort of proposing, and it's just really a first stab, it's a draft, and I really welcome the discussion, is that if you had to follow the guidelines and standards of a house if it was on the National Register of Historic Places, that's a pretty high bar. It gets into the use of materials, it gets into craftsmanship and workmanship, and that would clearly identify to the person getting the special permit what was expected, but it is a very high bar.
Karen, do you have anything that you want to add, or could add to this?
When you guys first talked about the policy, after Doug had made some suggestions, you seemed to want it a little bit stronger in terms of how you actually, you know, review at a building permit time, review at an occupancy permit time, to make sure that actually if they're following the guidelines, and for a national register, they would be, you know, quite steep, that it was all followed through, and it's not, and they're following through all the way. So, thus, I wrote, based on Doug's first pass at a, at a policy, I reinforced that with staff for, for checking in with historic, with the building permit, hiring a specialist, et cetera, all at the applicant's expense.
Okay. Have you seen these drafts?
I have, yep. Karen sent them to me. I have not had an opportunity to review it with the Historical Commission. We haven't met since this was sent to us, so I think I would like that opportunity, before you take a final vote on it, to kind of run it by them, to get their thoughts, to get their input, but I'm welcome to any suggestions, you know, on both of them. I went through them, you know, a couple, a couple of just minor issues- I went through them, uh, you know, a couple, a couple of just minor issues is that, in some areas we refer to the term districts. Situate does not have any formal historic districts in town, either a national register or local, so you might want to take that out just for a point of clarity.
Yeah, I think there's some language modifications, some of which Karen, I mentioned, I sent to you this evening, so nobody's had a chance to see it yet. But in terms of the general approach, maybe that would be good to just describe, right? I think that the concept is somebody who is proposing historic preservation as a public benefit for a permit should be required to provide a certain amount of information with that permit. That's kind of where we were last time, is that, you know, let's, let's say what needs to be submitted as a minimum for, um, to consider that as a potential public benefit. So I, I think that's a good first step, right? It's really on the proponent to propose something to, and there's a list of things that I think Karen's outlined here. Photographs, um, what else? Description of the existing structure and, and I say the historical significance, information from the Mass Cultural Research Information Center, a narrative, and I would say detailed description of the proposed work. All of that should be sort of part of the submittal as, as an initial step. Cause we don't want to be guessing at what the proponent's proposing to do. I think then what we're proposing is to send that to you, to your commission, um, along with, to the board members for initial review prior to, in, in my view, prior to the first public meeting.
Yeah, I think you want to make sure what someone's proposing as historic actually is.
Yeah, and we would want, we would want your opinion before we even had the first public meeting. That's kind of how, how I think we should develop this. And I think that's just pretty much how Karen's laid it out, right? And then it gets to sort of this point of, okay, um, what needs to be done to sort of finalize this? And I think there's, there's a notion that there needs to be some kind of third-party evaluation. This is where I got a little confused, Karen, on, on how things were laid out. Is the intent that, um, once they've submitted it and we've gotten comments back, that we then go to a third party like peer review? Is, is that what you're saying? Or is this consultant that you're talking about, the consultant that the, that the proponent hires? I'm trying to follow the sort of description. I don't want to get too detailed, but just the process. Is, or is that something that they, we would expect them to submit as part of the initial submittal?
No, I think after, after we've talked to determine if it's going to really need, if it really has historic, potential historic benefit-
Then they have to do a full workup on it, basically. Okay. And would that be, um, that would be a full workup they submitted that we then review sort of as a peer review? Do we need a peer review or is that something that just gets reviewed, um, by the Historic Commission? And the Planning Board, obviously, but?
I think it's a great question. Sometimes when somebody would say how they're going to do a restoration or renovation, you really start getting into, you know, roof angles and slopes or they might say they want to add a dormer or something like that. So sort of what looks like something on a sketch when you actually measure it out and really verify it and look at roof angles and things like that, it can be dramatically kind of different. Sort of what you see in the sketch and what would actually be done in a restoration or renovation process. So that was sort of the example with the Weatherby House. When, um-
That was an evaluation done before the renovation, though.
Correct.
But after you approved the project.
But after you approved the project, yeah.
We, the town picked the consultant on that one.
Right, right.
So I have a feeling that the town wants to be telling them who to use for a historical preservation consultant to, or, I mean-
You could recommend or something like that, but I think it would be to the proponent's responsibility to find the right person and then-
Okay.
And submit a plan, right?
Yeah.
And then the question, once that plan's submitted, is, I'm sure I would be unqualified-
Yeah.
-to review that plan, right? So we would then need either a peer review or to rely on the Historic Commission to provide that review.
Probably need a peer review for the, depending on the project, though.
Yeah, I mean, if it's simple enough, maybe-
If it's simple enough, right. If somebody's just saying that we're going to keep it exactly as it is, maybe we want to move it 20 feet to create access or some reason like that, then you could do that, so.
Right, and that's something that you could give us sort of input on as to whether that seems right or not.
There could be a point that it's beyond, you know, if somebody's, for example, the Weatherby House was a historic replication, almost.
Right.
You know, it was really, you know, measurements and size of windows and trim and everything, but just not using-
The original.
Original materials, right.
Right.
So you're going to request that they use original materials?
Well, if they went to the level that, um, the National Register of Historic Places uses, it would be, you know, it would be certain materials that can be used and not be used. So if the house originally had cedar shingles, they'd probably have to go back to cedar shingles instead of asphalt.
But they wouldn't have to go back and find 1740 cedar shingles.
No, 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 it'd have to be wood instead of, wood instead of, you know, aluminum siding or, you know, things like that, so.
Cause there's just products out there that are-
That, yeah, they're actually-
Last a lot longer in this area than maybe the original ones.
That's right, you know, one of the big discussions on historic properties is windows, right, fenstrations, so, you know, you could do a replacement window that would not have a storm window and looks kind of nice, but the glass is kind of thick. But in the historic preservation world, they say a storm window is actually a more sympathetic-
Treatment, yeah.
Treatment, but, I mean, I'm in this stuff, I pay attention to this and I'd rather have the other windows, but that's kind of how it goes. But Situate does not have any really stringent historic regulations or guidelines. There's a demolition review by law, but that's it. You know, there's no historic districts, there's no, there's nothing like that. There's a lot of homes that are on the National Register of Historic Places, but there are really no protections. There's no, um, you know, areas of town that are considered a local historic district which have those really stringent regulations. There's two types of districts, there's national registered districts and local historic districts. Believe it or not, the local historic districts are much more stringent than national registered districts, so. The center of Norwell, yeah, the center of Norwell is a national registered district. Hingham has several local historic districts. So there's a difference.
Years ago, um, they tried here in Situate to put in a historic district down on a part of Stockbridge Road, that area, and there just wasn't enough historic houses there to warrant.
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, you could draw one house as a historic district if you wanted to. You could do that, you know? The, uh, Nantucket, the entire island's a historic district. So there's different ways to do it. But so, in some ways, you know, national registered districts, it gives the perception of protection more than the actual. But it was very helpful to Hingham when they restored the Green Bush Rail because a national registered district or national registered property-
Sure.
-triggers Section 106, which is a federal requirement saying that you cannot do any adverse harm to anything historic uh, when you're using federal funds. So they did have an advantage there.
Well, we had it in North Situate as well.
Right, that's why they had to inventory all those properties and say within 600 feet of the tracks, whatever it was.
And that, um, so the standard that we're talking about of the national historic places, the, the preservation guidelines from the Secretary of Material-
Yep.
In, in your view, is that sort of a hard and fast set of guidelines or?
Well, that's something you could think about, you know, that could be the standard. But I thi- I think whatever you do is, you want to be certain that if somebody's proposing something that's going to be to the public benefit for historic, you know, that sort of what goes in comes out. You know, so it really is. Because I just think it's too kind of loose right now and it's open to a lot of interpretation. And I'm not sure it serves anyone well.
No, I agree.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it serves-
It's a balance, though, right? Cause if we're going to set this up and say this is what we expect you to fa- I mean, for somebody who's doing it, you want to give them sort of clear guidelines on what we're expecting as well.
Right.
So that they're not shooting at a moving target either, right?
Correct.
So that's why I ask about these particular guidelines. If that's the guideline and, you know, maybe we could waive some of those guidelines as we go through it, but that's what people should, uh, should aspire to, if you will.
I, I think you probably want something like that because if you make the guidelines so stringent, people might say, well, why bother? But then they might lose their opportunity to get a special permit too.
Right, right. Well, they, they would, you'd lose the opportunity to claim historic preservation as a public benefit in a special permit.
Right.
There are other public benefits, right, so.
Yeah, it could be recreation trails or whatever, so. It's something you think about or at the discretion of the planning board or, there could be some, you know, there's some things we just don't anticipate, right?
Yep.
Um, Phil, do you have anything?
Yeah, what about timing? Going through these processes?
Yeah, I mean, I think you want it, you don't want it to be too cumbersome that it can't. Um, I think you put a 21-day review for the Historical Commission to get back to the planning board, so that's fairly tight. I guess the question would be, you know, if somebody had to hire a consultant or something, how long that would take?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because time is, the money's these guys.
It sure is.
And those guys, them.
Them.
Yep.
Mine is a more philosophical question.
Sure.
I don't think, do you think that our bar is high enough or it doesn't even exist?
Right now?
Yes.
I, I don't believe it exists. That's just my opinion because I think when you say, you'd have to give me an example of one of your special permits, but how it's written, it just says, you know, we'll preserve the house at whatever, Invinal Road.
Not enough guidelines.
So there was no guidelines or, you know, there was, guidelines were interpreted. And all the intention might have been positive, but in the end-
I think that's why we need to get stuff in writing, right? And integrated into the permit.
The Weatherby House seemed to be a much more stringent writing. And in the end, I mean, the original intent was to try to preserve the house, but when the applicants, I know when they came to the Historical Commission, they said, you know, we're kind of in a bind here because the original house was built as a residential property. Part of it is now commercial, so it can't even handle the floor loads of a commercial building, so now we're really stuck.
Right.
So they felt their only option was a replication.
So the other question that would be is why do we not have any historic districts? So I know three right in town that I would consider to be, but what I know.
So we have them identified, we've actually identified about 14. And it's a process of whether it be a local historic district or a national registered district. I think the philosophy with the Historical Commission, which has only been around since about 2006, you have to remember that, has been that the pursuit of a national registered district is probably an easier avenue, does provide some perceptions of protection and, um, would still serve the same purpose. That people would know when they're entering a certain area, that this is an area of historical significance. Part of that is it's a cost to submit those applications. It's a cost to process them and get them approved. It's a fairly lengthy process. So the charge that the Historical Commission has really been under is inventorying. So if you go to the Macris site, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, today, yeah.
Were you there today and you saw all the houses? And that's a lot of work, so we have to sort of do our inventory. We have to get all the pieces in place before you start assembling districts to do that work. So I think the town has just really, just been late to the game in doing that.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
Um, Ben?
Um, I don't have anything specific on the draft policy. I think just in general, I'm in full support of this as it applies to the public historical review for public, the public benefit option, option on special permits. But I'm reflecting on all of this and hearing what's being said tonight. I'm also in full support of really putting some teeth into our zoning bylaw for all historic houses or whether that's establishing districts or some sort of, like you said, right now in your opinion, there's no bar. And I think we need to set some bar and decide what level of conservatism we want to have. But I think I would be in full support of even thinking about how we integrate this into our overall zoning and planning initiatives, um, long-term. It's not just as it applies to this special permit thing, but kind of branching out. Cause I think, I mean, I had Mrs. Leydlaw, you know, growing up as a kid in school and I think that people, new, new residents come or even when we live here for a long time, we go on with our lives, we forget that we live in one of the oldest towns in the country. And, um, you know, and there's a lot of other places in New England where the historical aspect is a big draw for people and it's a source of pride, it's a source of revenue through tourism, all sorts of things. And I think in Situate, we have a, like a strong group that keeps that going, but I think we really could expand on that and try to do a better job. Not, not that the Historical Commission and other groups aren't doing a good job, it's that we don't necessarily have the legal capacity through a bylaw or something to kind of force the issue.
Yeah.
Rebecca?
I don't have any questions.
My biggest concern is once, and I agree with everything that has been said here this evening, that we do need to make this really legitimate so that it's, uh, people can follow it. It's the follow-through, that once they receive the permit, once, we have to have someone to keep an eye on what they're doing.
And I'm going to defer to you guys on that. I mean, the commission is happy to partner with you, happy to do whatever we can to assist that process, but special permits-
I would think that would fall similar, well, no, I would think it would fall similar to what we do with like stormwater review. Like we have a peer review who does field visits, right? So why wouldn't we ask the applicant if, if they're basing their, their permit on providing this public benefit, why wouldn't we ask the applicant to provide some funding to allow us to do that ongoing review?
Absolutely.
Right? It would seem pretty natural to me. Um, and, and it wouldn't then place a burden on the Historic Commission or even on, well, other than the planning department has to manage the, the consultant, if you will. But, um, you know, it would, it wouldn't place a burden on others to, to have to sort of fill in on that role.
Rebecca?
I was just going to say, if we did have better guidelines in place, it would, you know, obviously, I think having somebody oversee it is a great idea, but also guidelines would be really helpful.
Yeah.
So both.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We're really eclectic in terms of our architecture, I hear.
We really are, you know, we have a lot of really significant historic structures in town. We can all name them, right? But there are a lot of, um, there was, yeah, just because it's old doesn't always make it historic too. So you look at age, you do look at architecture, but I think if you look at some of those forms that are done on Macris, they call them Form Bs, if they're done well, there's a lot of detail that does try to identify the historic structure or who built it and some of the original photographs. I think what happens too is over time, you know, houses get changed, houses get modified, things happen, so.
But I know at DRC, when they, they've looked at it, sat there and said, well, we've got a dormer here.
Yeah.
That, is that, is that really, with the time period and the, you, you really don't know?
A lot of folks were doing what they wanted to do, you know, back in the day, so. I mean, there's a pretty big collection of center chimney capes that are fairly old and are pretty significant. We don't have a lot of Victorian architecture, but you can go through the different years. A good example is, um, you know, 545 Country Way that Frank Snow did. I mean, he picked a period that he wanted to restore it to and it looks great, you know, so.
Stunning.
It really is.
Any comments from the public? Yes?
Andrea, 166 Mail Lot Road. What we're discussing here is mostly people who are coming in, your proponent that you're speaking of, and asking for a special permit to preserve. And I can understand how that can happen. I think that for me, as a Situate resident and seeing what is happening to some of the very special areas that we have in this town, I would also like to see, as Ben suggested, some type of a district so that the town itself, even the town-owned property, could do something to protect our area. There was a lot of arguing and discussion about the national historic areas around the old Gate School, the Lawson Tower, the Unitarian Church, um, and that whole area. And yet, when those issues were brought up and Lyle Nyberg went through Gate School and identified several things and talked about getting that on the registry, it was kind of dismissed and none of the rules and regulations that the registry puts out for a historic district, even though it was said to be of historic significance, none of the rules and regulations for that were followed in the planning of the, of the senior center. And, um, it's kind of a shame that the town is not held to the same standard that we might hold- hold a proponent who's coming in for a preservation. We need to have a standard to do something to save our historic areas so that they're not encroached upon with large buildings that don't fit the area.
Okay. Thank you.
I would suspect that would take a zoning change. I don't think it's anything we could do.
No.
But we can definitely do it, certain project by project, by setting up a policy here, but it's not.
Without having a district like that, you're at a point where if anybody ever sold the Gates School and wanted to put in senior housing in there and that land was sold, they could, they could go in and do anything because we don't have any rules or regulations to stop that.
Yeah, I think that is the point I was making, is that we can't do that. That has to be a town meeting vote to create a special district or special districts for those kinds of things.
Exactly.
Which I would, I would probably defer back to the historic commission to create those.
So, so nationally, interestingly, a national registered district does not need a town meeting vote. That's actually kind of a direct application to the Secretary of the Interior. A local historic district would need a local town meeting vote and it would create the creation of a local historic district commission that would have to establish the guidelines as to what, you know, which can be pretty stringent.
Always goes back to that, yeah.
Yeah. So those are your two options.
Well, I think it would make sense for you to review our latest version of this and get your feedback.
We'll do that fairly quickly because we're meeting again on the 30th, so we'll go through it. We'll come back with recommendations.
Yeah.
Another draft back and.
The only thing I would sort of highlight here is that in places we talk about the billing commissioner and the historic commission sort of doing things or not issuing, you know, billing permits or stuff, and I just think we might need to look at it in terms of, at the end of the day, the planning board has to make a decision on a permit and that decision may be conditioned upon those specific things, right? And then we would expect the billing commissioner to live, you know, live with the conditions in the permit, right? So I would just rewrite a little bit that, that we would make a decision and can condition the decision and then we would expect that the billing commissioner would follow the conditions in the permit. Because I don't think we can require him, you know, out of our policy to do this. We can do it on a permit-by-permit basis, right?
Right.
So that's the only other tweak I'd probably think about here, but we can do that after we get your comments.
Sure.
So could I ask a question?
Yeah.
It seems that you're saying that, I mean, you want something tied to the building permit, you want ongoing inspections during construction. I was, I was putting something in here, no occupancy permit, and then how do you guys feel about surety? I mean, I was requiring surety to make sure that.
I'm perfectly fine with that, you know? I mean, because this gets us into this condition we're in now where somebody's done a nonhistoric preservation to a historic property, right? So I think that's fine.
If anybody has any more comments, please get them back. We'll wait for the historic, then we'll meld them together and then we'll have it on the agenda again.
That would be great.
I'm happy to come back.
How's the demolition bylaw?
We've had some success with it. We have had, given people opportunities to sort of rethink some properties. We've had a few folks who have said, "Okay, you know, we can just Form B the lot and keep the property historic and we'll build something new over here." So we've had some wins with it. You know, it's usually a difficult, you know, people can wait it out if they want to, but we've had a few folks reconsider and do something different, so.
But I think because of the linkage, we may want to tweak that at the same time we're doing this one.
Yeah. I think that sort of the, the interesting thing here is this is a planning board policy, right? So it's not a regulation or anything else. It's our policy, so to the extent that we want to, we think it's appropriate to deviate from that policy for a particular reason, like the guidelines or anything, we should have the latitude to do that, right? So.
I think that, you know, the demolition piece is sort of trying to do a prevention where this is sort of an opportunity for somebody to maybe look at a property differently and say, "Hey, we could do something really great here and that would help us get our permit," you know? And maybe that's where the, you know, the wisdom of the planning board, I would say, could say, "Wow, if they're really going to do a great job preserving this property for the public benefit, then you do whatever to grant the permit to go around whatever that particular."
Yeah.
So close on the zoning issue, you know?
Almost like a waiver or something like that.
Six parking spaces instead of eight, but, you know, we're preserving that house. So I think that's really the, that's the way you motivate people to do, or developers or whoever it may be.
Yeah.
Do they see an opportunity economically and.
But we just want to make sure after all of that, they actually do it.
Correct.
That's the point.
Right, right, and the interpretation.
The way that we think it should be done.
Yeah, and I think that's really, is the challenge, the way we think it should be done because I think there's some folks out there who probably thought they were doing the right thing.
That's a matter of opinion.
Could be, right?
Yes.
Jennifer Keen, 20 Kerry, Lishfield Lane. I didn't get a handout, so I'm not really seeing what you guys are talking about. Do you have an extra copy?
No, not the agenda, but the proposed.
No, I don't have it yet.
I can email it to her.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you so much for coming in.
Happy to be here.
Appreciate it, yeah.
You'll get back to us.
We'll get back to you guys.
And we will work all of this out to hopefully everyone's satisfaction.
Sounds great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, all right. All right, we have six, where? We have, no, we have a.
Four minutes.
Four minutes. Okay.
Sorry, slow.
Very slow. We have four minutes.
Three minutes now.
Well, by the time they get in here and set up, it'll be time. It's 443 to 461. It's 443. It's 443 to 461, right? Not 441 to 463. Can you clarify the address to this project? We have two different addresses. I. 443 to 461. Okay. Thank you. You just need the paper quicks.
Oh, no, 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 this is, this is the keep pile.
Okay.
This is, this is keep week.
All right, it is 8 o'clock. That clock is slow, so we'll continue with our public hearing on Chief Justice Cushing Highway, 441 to 463. Mr. Morse, you're on.
For the record, Gregory Morris, engineer, we're here with.
Attorney Ben O'Brien.
Dave McCready. This is continued hearing of development property in CJC Highway. We've been, I believe, three times with this plan. Since the last time, we've made two revisions to the plan and we've had a round of review comments with Merrill Associates. Since the last set of plans, the changes that we made were to lots one and two, the building locations here were rotated. We increased the buffer on lots one and two and actually all the lots, we increased the buffer. It used to be 20 feet along the back between the development and the butters. We've increased that now to a minimum of a 40-foot buffer along that entire lot line. We've shortened the driveway on lots one and two by approximately 50 feet. By reducing the driveway, it allowed us to pull the buildings forward. The buildings were previously proposed 30 feet from the lot line. We now have them proposed at 65 feet. 20 is the requirement, so it greatly exceeds the requirement for setback. We made some revisions to the drainage system. The drainage system used to be more of an overland flow into a rain garden system. We've now proposed on the pavement areas, providing a Cape Cod berm directing the water to a catch basin, a deep-sump-footed catch basin, and then directing it into a four-bay prior to the rain garden. At the lowest driveway on lot seven and eight, we have a catch basin into an oil particle separator and then into the rain garden, all complying with the minimum 90% TSS removal in accordance with the Water Resource Protection Act. The septic system was asked to be moved. The requirement, this is Tac Factory Pond requirement, is that there be a 200-foot setback to any septic system. We moved the system to be more than 400 feet away to the Tac Factory Pond. So we've slid the septic systems up gradient. We've adjusted the site to accommodate the 400-foot setback. The plans went to Merrill Associates. Merrill Associates provided a comment letter last week and we've responded to that letter. The additional comments that were outstanding, we believe were all relatively minor in nature, but we made the revisions requested and submitted revised plans that we believe should satisfy all of Merrill's outstanding comments. We've added inverts to the downspout leaders on the drywells. We've added a table identifying on which lots, the number of infiltration chambers. 100% of the roof here is directed into subsurface recharge chambers, so we identified on a tabular format as well as on the plans, the number of chambers on each lot. We've increased the sizes of the temporary construction basins during construction, temporary stormwater basins would be constructed on the down gradient side of each of the three common driveways. We've increased the size of those and included some additional detailing on how water will get there during the construction phase. And we added a note that all of the inverts in and out of the depressions would have flared end sections on them and we added a Cape Cod berm detail, a standard detail per year regulations now that we've added that on the driveways. We're anxious to have this through its final review hopefully and start talking about conditions.
Okay, Karen?
So they submitted a new set of plans earlier this week that has not been peer-reviewed because it wasn't submitted with a week's, with proper time. Two comments were received late today. One was from the Water Resource Commission and the Water Resource Commission, DPW and Water Department agree that while Tac Factory Pond has been classified as a tributary, is a surface water and should be treated as such. With that in mind, the Water Resource Committee would like to know the impervious covers of dwellings and roof infiltration system that remain in the 400-foot area and move the proposed swill at the edge of lot eight out of the 400-foot area. I believe we had, we had some meetings with the applicant after the last meeting and basically the board asked the applicant to move everything out of the 400-foot area and that has really not been done. You still have the lower infiltration system and the two of the units in the 400-foot. I mean, technically, there is only a 200-foot requirement, but you just have heard from the Water Resource Committee that they would like, you know, the 400. Robert Cheshire made a comment today. He'd like to know the results of the mounting analysis for the roof drywells and they, he wants it submitted if it hasn't been submitted. And he said he was still waiting for answers to his previous questions. Those are the two that you just, everybody, we got those late today. We did have some photographs submitted from Mrs. Butler and I forwarded them to Mr. Morse and I don't know if any resolution with the photographs. There was water sitting at the surface of several areas on site and Mr. Morse, I forwarded that information and the contact information. I don't know if that's been followed up on.
I did speak with Mrs. Butler about the photos that were submitted. My first request was back to the planning department. I did not receive a response and that was, I wanted to know where the photos were taken because I was sent photos of water on the ground. I was sent photos of puddles essentially. In speaking with Mrs. Butler, I was told that the photos were taken toward the bottom of the hill on the opposite side of the stone wall near, near her house down here. That's all in our proposed do-not-disturb zone. So those are areas where there's existing puddles. Those puddles would remain. We're not adding water to them. We're not taking water away from them either. But that's all located within the do-not-disturb zone. The Water Resource Committee letter that was just handed to me, the 400-foot setback, we discussed this at the last meeting, but I believe that the, the board presented to us that you wanted the septic system outside the 400-foot and that's what we did. We moved the septic system outside the 400-foot setback. Within the 400-foot setback, there were no state regulations or no town regulations that prevent cutting or a roof area or grade at all, let alone the real setback is only 200 feet. We talked about moving the septic system outside the 400 and we did that. We complied with what was requested of us at the last meeting. We were not asked to move the entire building and all of the graded outside of the 400, but we did move the septic system as requested by this board.
Where's the 400-foot line on that drawing?
Sure. So. 400 feet is essentially right here at the face of the building on lot eight. This, this piece of the property here. Again, there's no restrictions on clearing. The restriction is, is that the town situat has a 150-foot do-not-disturb zone to a tributary to the reservoir. We greatly exceed the 150-foot do-not-disturb zone and we got the system more than two times the requirement away from the reservoir. 100% of the roof area is being recharged into drywells, so that hasn't changed. That's been the case all along, 100% of the roof area. The Water Resource Committee's previous correspondence, I believe, addressed that.
So what is it the Water Resources Commission asked? They said, "Provide the impervious cover of the dwellings and roof infiltration system that remain within the 400-foot area." So I realize you were just handed this, I think we were too, so.
So the Water, the Water Resource Committee has, has one regulation essentially with respect to impervious land area and that is that if a lot exceeds 15% of impervious area, you need to recharge anything beyond that 15% mark. All of these lots are under that 15% area. They're all two-acre lots and we provide recharge throughout the site anyways, so there's not a problem with any compliance with any of their regulations. I had documented that previously in correspondence that we had submitted. So I'm glad.
So you're saying they have the answer to this already?
You, you do in your correspondence and previous letters. You, you do in your correspondence and previous letters.
Karen?
I've been providing the Water Resource Committee with all the correspondence. She got, she got the latest drawings that were unpeer-reviewed, and she got the latest set of drainage calculations, which are unpeer-reviewed as well.
Okay. And we have our consultant here this evening?
Yes.
If you would care to comment, sir?
Sure. Peter, I'm Gary from Merrill Engineers and Land Slayers. We did receive revised plans. I think it was yesterday or maybe it's Monday, and we haven't had a chance to review them. We did review their response letter. Based on their response letter, they addressed all our comments, but I can't, I can't say that they have, because I haven't looked at the plans. On our previous report, we had expressed questions or raised questions about the temporary sedimentation basins as part of the erosion control plan. It looks like they have modified them, but again, I haven't checked the calculations at all. And then the other thing we had asked, well, I think the major thing was, we felt strongly that there should be drain easements for any area that's going to be subject to flows. Again, based on our review of the, quick review of the plans, it looks like they're on the plan, but again, I haven't really got into the plans yet, so...
I have a, I just have a question on that. Who would the easement be?
Excuse me, excuse me. Would you direct your comment to me and identify yourself?
Sure. Attorney Vincent O'Brien. The question was, and I heard about this today, a drainage easement, and that's fine. Who would the easement be granted to? Who would the easement, who would be the beneficiary of the easement? The town? I mean, the property's in a condominium, so the condominium owns all the property, so they can't grant an easement to themselves because they own it. So, I didn't know if you wanted an easement to the town or to some other entity, to the DPW, or can't create an easement.
I think it would be an easement to the town, basically right of access to it. I'm not sure, and it wasn't really clear to me to others who did that, this was all going to be one condominium association. If it's one total association, then I guess an easement to somebody else wouldn't be necessary, but I think the town should have the right to have a little enter if there was a problem. And also, and I haven't seen an easement leverage, but I think it's important that it specifies that these areas are disturbed. You know, you can't make a garden out of it. It basically has to be, remain in its natural state.
That, that's why I, and I've seen, you know, easement to the town, that the town has the right to enter if, if the association's not doing what they're supposed to do, and then the town can build the association. That's what I wanted to clarify, that. If that's the case, then it's sort of like, they have the right to enter to reasonably inspect with notice, and if for some reason the association's not doing their job, the town can force them to do their job, and if the town does it, then they can assess the, the association for that maintenance. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify who was being granted to, and that, that makes sense. I've seen that in a number of subdivisions, for example, or something like those.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think that just gives us sort of the, the last stop, right? If somebody's really torn up, and I've seen this happen in town where they've completely eliminated the design of the swale or whatever by somebody modifying, you know, the property halfway through the swale or something.
And that makes sense, and that's why I wanted to get clarification so that I can, I can prepare a draft of that once I see the plans.
All right. Anything else?
No, that was it.
All set. All right. I'll open it up to the board. Start with Bill.
Sure. Start with Bill. Driveway number one, you say you moved the driveway, what, 50 feet?
About 50 feet short, correct.
Okay. Well, what did that do of anything to the slope?
Nothing to the slope of the driveway. The whole cul-de-sac slid a little bit closer to the street.
Okay.
It just allowed a greater setback to the properties to the left that it was.
And that gave, increased the amount of space around the, the units?
Yes. It moved them closer to Route 3A, but they do comply with the 100-foot setback, which is the requirement.
And you put it to catch basins on the other ones. Where, where do they go to?
Proposed catch basins right here. That catch, this catch basin here discharges into this four-bay into a rain garden. We put a catch basin here, which discharges into an oil separator and then into the rain garden system there. And, and up top on the, on the highest driveway, we put a catch basin to a four-bay to the rain garden. So, there are three catch basins.
Is that all domino down the hill?
It, it does, correct.
So, that the, the catch basins you're talking about, sort of in the middle and in the far, I guess that's west or whatever, are, are getting bigger and bigger because they're collecting more?
Correct. Correct. It's also put in there for, you know, redundancy efforts. Each of these systems, this one, this one, and this one, by, by themselves comply with the 90% TSS removal that's in the district, but this also acts as a triple redundant system here that, you know, if there was a problem, you know, with the stormwater here, it has to go through two downgradient systems like yours. Same with this one, it has to go through.
So, how does that work? Let's, let's pick the 100-year storm. What happens in a 100-year storm?
Sure. In a 100-year storm, this, this rain garden here ultimately fills up. It overtops. There's a riprap outlet spillway here. The way that the grading is, this water here is directed, it's over land flow and gets collected in this depression here, which then goes through a pipe under the driveway over to this depression. This depression here fills up. There's a riprap spillway, again, it's directed down to a depression on the uphill side of this driveway through a pipe under the driveway into this depression, which ultimately discharges to a riprap, which then discharges over land.
So, in the 100-year storm, all of these basins are overtopping, basically? Is that how it's designed?
Correct.
And, and then, how much goes, like, into infiltration versus, you know, over land, I guess?
So, all of the roofs go into the infiltration systems?
Which are separate from these?
Which are separate. So, all the roofs have downspout gutter systems on them. Each of the lots has a minimum of 16, up to, I believe, a maximum of 24 leaching chambers for each lot. So, all that water is infiltrated into the ground. In our drainage calculations, we provided the runoff in the volumes for the one, the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events, and in all storm events, we're discharging less water in the post-condition than in the pre-condition to the downgradient lot line.
All right. Bill, had you finished? Do you have anything else that you want to talk about?
No, not right now.
Patty?
I want to defer all my water questions to Mr. Prince or to Mr. Boardstein. Thank you.
I'm deferring all my other questions to Patty, though.
Okay. Rebecca, do you have anything?
So, the septic system that was moved, how, now, it seems far from the building, and maybe I'm wrong by looking at it over there. Is, how's it, everything getting over to that septic system?
Sure. So, the, the septic system has a, has a septic tank. Next to the septic tank is a pump chamber, and then it gets pumped over. They're all six-bedroom septic designs, all of the lots. Each of the units are three-bedroom units.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. Ben?
Oh.
It's all right, Ben.
Since the last iteration of the plan, I'm sorry, has there been, I know things have moved around, but has there fundamentally been any changes to the limit of clearing that you know of?
So, the, the limit of clearing was shifted up the hill on Lot Eight, which is the most downgradient, because we pulled the septic system up the hill.
Sure.
And then the buffer along the western lot line to the butters, that used to be a 20-foot vegetated buffer. We now propose it's a 40-foot vegetated buffer.
So, do you have any, like, estimate of the percent increase now in, or increase of that?
The, the green space, the undisturbed land area, is approximately 60% of the site at this point. It used to be 55% of the site.
Okay. So, since the last time I saw it, it's about 5%?
It's about 5%.
Delta. All right. The other question I had is, that I brought up last time, is with the water concerns that we've discussed, is I brought up is that I'm concerned about, out of an abundance of caution, evaluating whether there's anything that could be defined as an intermittent tributary of the water supply, and I kind of requested that perhaps a site survey by a hydrogeologist or water resource engineer be conducted. I was wondering if that had been conducted or if it's planned.
Sure. I reached out directly to the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP, to a hydrogeologist that's familiar and is Donborke constituent there. I requested that this board would like if he would do a site visit at this case. I also referred him to the existing DEP file numbers. The DEP hasn't reviewed this specific site, but they have reviewed extensively the Tac Factory Pond with the expansion of the reservoir and the height, heightening of it. Mr. Bauk, Bruce Bauk is his name, the hydrogeologist, he didn't think it was necessary to come to this site. He was comfortable with what he had seen. I had CC'd Karen on those emails requesting him to come.
Okay. Ben, are you also?
Last thing is just a comment on a question, which is that I think, we all know, I don't want to sound cynical or negative, but we all know what happens to stormwater operations and maintenance plans once everyone moves in and, you know, things are, the builders are gone, the engineers are gone. And we also know what happens during the construction phase when you have contractors that are just used to doing general site work and don't really understand the nuance of constructing infiltration systems and things like that. I think that the construction specifications for the stormwater infrastructure and the operations and maintenance plan needs to really be dialed in and overseen throughout the life of this project. That's just a comment.
Very good comment. Okay. I'm going to defer to the public at this point in time. Anyone with a comment? Yes?
Is there any, going to be any drainage on the back part of the property or just the ones out front?
All of the driveway areas drained to the drainage systems at the front of the lot.
But there's no drainage in the back?
No, there's not.
I just think with the last plan a while ago, I know they said it was approved or whatever, they were going to do the big berm with all the water down at the bottom of the hill, because that's where it's going to end up, I'm sure. And then the Water Resource Committee, that's when they were concerned that it would be making a tributary to the pond. My concern is just the water coming down in the slope. I mentioned the slope before.
Yeah, I had wondered myself, and thank you for bringing that up. There does not appear to be anything in the back in terms of, this is just going to slide off the property to the pond?
Correct. That's what it does now in its current condition.
Okay.
That's what it will continue to do.
And how high of the mounted septic systems?
Septic systems are required to be four feet above the groundwater. Typically, on this site, groundwater is about two to three feet below the ground surface. So, you're bringing in fill around the septic systems. Septic systems are coming out of the ground anywhere from three to five feet.
And so, what about basically runoff from these mounds, if you will, that will just flow into the back of the property and then down?
Correct. It'll flow, it'll all flow in a southerly direction toward the Tac Factory Pond. Water doesn't run across the contours, across the lot line. It's going to run in a southerly direction perpendicular to the contours.
Yes.
The water does flow down there? I remember the last house there on Old Ford used to show like a river, and it is the natural flow, but with this type of, everything that's going to go on in there, then you're going to have to water the whole pool, so whatever is going to drain off.
Anyone else?
Could I, could I ask Peter a question here? This, I mean, you've looked at the original calc's on this. What, what has been the sort of before and after flows on that section? Do you, do you remember?
Well, I don't specifically remember the, the flows per area per se, but the calculations do satisfactorily demonstrate that...
It's not additional flow?
It's not additional. It's, it's less both volume and grade. All of the paved areas are going to the closed drainage system and going into the rain gardens and so on. So, anything that is going untreated, if you will, is going overland, and again, it's less than the existing condition.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, Becky Mallon. I just wanted to clarify the comments directed by the board. I wish they were last minute. I just got the plans yesterday. So, I chair of the Water Resources Commission, and seeing the septic system moved as an acknowledgement of the 400-foot buffer, there are some additional requirements. We're going to consider Tac Factory Pond as a surface water supply and not just a tributary. And one of the reasons I asked for the impervious cover of what remains in that section is because the impervious cover requirement is different for Zone A than for the Water Resource Protection District. I believe it's a maximum of 20%, even if there is artificial recharge. That's why I asked for that. And that swale drains downhill towards, towards the buffer, that larger buffer zone, and as a, as it mitigates pollution, that's not the word I was going for, but, you know, will that could, is there a concern if it's not maintained well over time, if that could become a source of pollution, and that's why I requested moving that within the 400-foot buffer as well?
And which swale is that?
The swale right at the end of, here, and it drains that way.
Oh, coming off of the, the spreader there, or whatever that is? I see.
Can you give me a two-minute tutorial on how I design a rain garden?
Sure. Rain garden essentially is a detention basin that's specifically designed with plantings in it for nutrient uptake. It has berms on either side of it as a detention basin, but it has an inlet. In this case here, it's a pipe that's bringing water in from the catch basin, but it's made specifically to have plantings in it as opposed to being a, a bone surface.
Okay. And then, the feed that goes into that rain garden is the same as it would go, look the same when I look at the roof? The roof drains, then the other drains that go into it?
So, the, so it's the catch basins that are feeding the rain gardens. The roof drains are all subsurface drywall systems, so those don't feed in.
And it looks like the, I'm just following up on Bill's comment here, but it looks like if you sort of think about the single point of failure on these things, it's the pipes under the driveway, right? So, if, if the pipes get clogged or covered, then it's going to change the, the water flow, basically, and move it out towards the highway, right?
No. Actually, if the pipes get clogged, the water would back up in that upgradient depression. And when you come in off of Route 3A, we have a negative pitch onto the site. We're not allowed to discharge water onto Route 3A, so that the depression would fill up. It would overtop the road and then flow across the road to the depression as opposed to running subsurface through the pipe. Now, the piping all has been designed, though, to be under a, under a driveway.
Will that be part of the maintenance plan to make sure that leaves and whatever else is...
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be my concern with it, is that over time, you don't end up getting flow through those pipes. How big are those pipes?
They're 12-inch.
If I may comment on that for a second. It's easy, it's also easy, Steve, you can spec in, inlet grades at the, at the, so you're not actually getting large debris going into the pipe, and then as part of your, now you do trash clean out and get everything before it even goes on the pipe. And I'd say the main thing is not the pipe vacuum, but sedimentation of the rain garden. the rain garden itself. So fine sediments block the infiltration capacity of the engineered soil that's supposed to go in there. So then you're not, you're effectively clogging up your drain, which is your rain garden. And that's an important part of O&amp;M.
Which is spilling over to the pipes.
Right. And that's why Mr. Morse has incorporated things like the rip rap and things like that to catch sediment before it gets in. But it's also imperative that those things are checked periodically and cleaned up.
They're visual and you can see them.
Yeah.
But to Ben's point, are inlet grades specified here?
I have no idea.
We were asked to put flared end sections on.
So there's no inlet grades here? So if you want them, I would ask for them.
Well, what do you think?
I think that it would depend on how small an inlet grade you want. I used to suggest a flared end sections because I think it makes a smooth transition into a side slope. The downstream end of these pipes also has a sediment for bay, which again is an open body. And the primary function of that is to trap sediment fines before it gets into the rain garden. So I think that, I think the flayed end section, the sediment for bay will provide the areas for the sediment to basically settle out. And that's exactly what we want to have. Unless you would have put very fine grades on the upstream side, you're not going to, you're not going to trap, you're not going to get, trap all the fines on the upstream side. And the converse ends, then you plug it up.
Yeah.
And then they have the grass swales overtopping. And Greg was right, based on the gradient, if those grass swales on the, I'll say the northward side of each driveway overtop, they're going to go across the driveway and then back into the sediment for bay, back into the rain garden. So I think.
So they won't go out towards 3A?
That's correct.
Okay. I think the grate we were, that I was thinking of was more sort of a gross level for leaves and branches and all that stuff, not, I don't think you're ever going to put a grate in there that captures sediment probably.
Well, you could have had that. But again, it's like anything else, it's a maintenance.
Right.
You could also have something more like a overflow structure, which is flat on the top, and have the water kind of cascade into it. Again, it's a maintenance issue.
It is all about the maintenance.
Exactly.
All about the maintenance.
There's many ways you can do it.
Okay.
Well, the visible, the visible issue is if you're the homeowner and it backs up, then you're going to do the maintenance to clear it, right?
I would hope so.
You would only hope.
So that's why I'm thinking maybe a grate makes some sense here.
Most people, particularly if you're a homeowner, you see something that may jeopardize your house or your driveway, whatever, you want to fix. They'll take care of it, even if it means walking in the water and removing the debris. And most people do do that.
Yes, ma'am?
Lauren, 21 stars. I was just curious, so between the condominium association that will be in charge of the maintenance of this system?
Yes.
And so when someone's buying their condominium, they realize that all the?
Yes. And they will pay?
They get the O&amp;M?
It happens if only one of the, one of them gets sold, who's the host of all these condominiums.
It will be the developer.
Common responsibility, though. It's a common responsibility.
Yes.
For the condo owners.
Okay. So they have dues and setting aside money every month?
Supposed to. Yes.
They try to like making sure that happens, though.
The condo, the.
Condo board.
The board.
Okay, so.
The homeowners, basically.
Right. You know all about that.
It's just like your septic system, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
When I was talking about the block stretch where I said that the water study would say that they're creating a tributary, the people that were doing that last plan said that the rain gardens wouldn't work on the hill. And it's very challenging to have something on the slope. You know, it looks okay on paper because it looks flat. Do you know what I'm saying? So, that's all.
Could you comment on that?
Well, they're designed to be flat on the bottom. So, I mean, the way they're achieving it is they're cutting in, the slope is like this, I don't know how to really explain it easily, but the slope is like this, they're creating the berm and then they're cutting in, they're making a flat area, then they're basically making a slightly steeper slope on the uphill side. So based on the design plans, they will be flat, the rain gardens themselves will be flat.
Okay. And hopefully they've come a long way since, what was that, 2007? Any other members of the public? Who have a comment?
All right, we have to review everything and come to a meeting of the minds.
Do we want to get them to opine on this, this mounding analysis and stuff?
Yes, and.
I mean, I guess maybe you just got this note as well.
They did.
Okay.
Yeah, they just got it today.
All right, then we'll, I guess we'll.
So you will respond to the mounding issue and all that and let us know. So we're going to continue this public hearing. Do we have a date, Karen?
Well, I mean, I guess that depends on, how much work does the board think is really necessary to complete the project? And are you, are you wanting to have a decision at the next meeting?
My other, one other concern that I have, there will, this is not a 55 and older condominium association, and thank you for that because I personally don't care for them. But that said, where are these children going to play? Will there be areas for them?
Mr. Payne?
So there's a total of 16 units here?
Yep.
Some of them are going to be more conducive to a young family than other units. You know, these units here, these have rather significant, large, flat backyard areas. These units here, you could easily put a playground up in the backyard of each of those units and not have any issue. Same goes for these two units. Nice, big, flat backyard essentially. This backyard here is about 30 feet in-depth, flat backyard. This here is approximately 60 feet off the back of these two units. That's a flat area there. So, yeah, there's absolutely room to fit a playground on several of the units there.
Okay. And so you're going to keep as many trees in the area as is absolutely possible?
Everything that you see in dark green there, that's our limit of work. So we're trying to leave as many trees as possible around the perimeter of the site, along the entire frontage, along the green belt. And we have proposed some plantings in between the units and some additional plantings between the units and the butters to the west to help enhance that 40-foot vegetative buffer.
Okay. All right. Do we have a date?
It depends on when they're going to get, are they going to get, are you going to get us another set of revised drawings? Or do you want Peter Palmieri to review the drawings that were submitted the other day?
Sure.
That's the first question because then that depends on when, if you, if the board wants to proceed with a draft decision.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about when we're going to get all this review done.
Are you?
So we submitted revised plans that we think address all of Peter's outstanding comments. I believe I can address through letter format the comments made by the Water Resource Committee in the mounding analysis. I think we comply with those requirements. I'm confident we comply with those. So I'd like to review the plans that we previously submitted.
Okay.
I just want to comment. And again, I haven't looked at the plans, but I would just ask Greg to double check the erosion control plan to make sure everything is going to get to temporary sedimentation basins and the basins are adequately sized and they have some sort of an outlet.
For construction, you talked about, yeah.
Yes. Because I, for this site, it's extremely important.
Yes, absolutely. And also to the condominium docks, will you have those for our review?
We've had them once. I mean, we've had them once and I haven't sent them back out for review. But, I mean, they got town council's comments the first time around. So I'll have to re-review, re-review them to see if they need strengthening, but based on the input from this week. I mean, I guess if the board wants, we have time, nine o'clock on February 13th. Otherwise, February 27th, it wouldn't be till like 9:30.
Oh, 9:30, no. Nothing good happens after nine.
And will we be able to get your feedback from the Water Resources Commission as well?
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that's dependent on maybe getting some, the information that you've requested, right? Okay.
So the 13th at nine?
So I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the common driveway special permit in stormwater for 443-461 Chief Justice Pushman Highway until February 13, 2020 at 9:00 PM. And continue the tide for action for Friday with the town clerk until?
February 28th.
2/28, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
If I can send you the condo docs.
Greg, good question. The piece that I didn't understand, I'm still not sure that I understand.
All right.
I know how the water gets in, but I don't know whether it should be a 30 by 30 or 30 by 50.
All favor. Thank you. Fine. We have, let's do approve minutes. We have to wait till nine o'clock to do.
So I move to approve the meeting minutes for January 9, 2020.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting?
I move to approve the requisition of $400 to Horstley-Witten Grouping for peer review services of 14 to 16 old countryway definitive subdivision plan. $200 to Horstley-Witten Grouping for peer review services for One Buck Island and Shark Beach definitive subdivision plan. For $2,979.20 to Horstley-Witten Grouping for the peer review services associated with seaside and situate phase one. For $2,586 to Horstley-Witten Group for peer review services associated with seaside and situate phase two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do they have a word for anybody else?
Okay. Let's see, layers on reports?
I attended zoning board of appeals last week because I had to go before them for something I'm doing on my property. But Bob Vogel was presenting the repair, reconstruct by, proposed bylaw change to the zoning board. And there wasn't really a very much substantive comment on the actual text and meat of the bylaw, but the board kind of came to consensus that they want the authority to issue that only by special permit. So kind of similar to what we were talking about, about in those cases where this, you know.
Where ghosts be on?
Yeah, exactly. Would be like reviewed by a special permit. And we had said maybe it would be us. The zoning board said it should be, they, I mean, I didn't really bring up the planning board, I was just kind of observing. But they were thinking similar, but they specifically said the zoning board of appeals should have the authority to issue that by special permit. So Bob was going to go back to the drawing board and kind of tweak what he had come up with. So we'll see.
Yeah, if I could follow up on that. Bob is, Bob told me the zoning board thought that the language should be a lot simpler. And so he's going to take another stab at it and then get it to, I think, us and then get it back to the zoning board. So in light of, for all that process to occur, we're postponing, we're not going to advertise for that public hearing until February 27th, when you're going to have the assigned bylaw hearing as well. So we'll just have one zoning public hearing now pushing off so that the zoning board gets to weigh in a couple times on what Bob is writing because they are going to actually be the sponsor of that article. But you still have to have the public hearing and make a recommendation.
We do, if they're sponsoring it, don't they?
Yeah, because you have to, it's mass state law, zoning has to have a public hearing before the planning board. And you have to do a report at town meeting.
And so, just so I understand the, sort of the distinction here, I'm not sure I understand why, it would go to a zoning board of appeals or a planning board for a special permit? What's, what's the, what was the sort of logic on that?
Well, because, because they already have to go to the zoning board of appeals for those two sections anyways. So the special permit should be through the zoning board of appeals.
For what, two sections?
For section 830 and 810. They already have to go there. So if there's going to be something that needs another special permit, it still should be the CBA as the permit granting authority.
Okay. Well, that may, that would be more efficient anyway.
Right, it would be.
Okay. I get that.
The only other thing I have is, as many of you were, the master plan advisory committee will be meeting on this coming Tuesday at the library at 6:30. I'll send out a reminder. I'm talking with the consulting team tomorrow to hopefully come up with some semblance of an agenda or set some goals for the meeting. So I'll try to pass that on probably Monday or tomorrow afternoon as well. And then on that front, I'm also with, Karen and I have been in touch with the middle school principal. I brought this up once before, but they still are trying to do this civics engagement thing with the seventh grade where we have one session that's about the planning and master planning, and then another one where we actually take solicit student input. So we're kind of, we're kind of left with Brad leaving with a little bit of a void. So I'm trying to catch up, but it would be great if any other members of the board would be interested in helping with that effort because we're going to need to probably put together a presentation and figure that out. So just if anyone's interested in that.
I'll go.
All right, I'll put, I'll send, I'll send an email to the group and then we can figure out and start talking with Ryan, because it looks like, Ryan's the principal. It looks like, it looks like, because the teachers have to put in the lesson plan and everything, it kind of like, it's kind of slow. They can't just do it in less minutes. So we'll probably have to be farther out sometime in February at this point. But I'll just let, I'm trying to just keep them, let them know that we're still interested. So figure that out.
All right. CPC met last Monday night. We have, the Union Mission Chapel is looking for funds to redo their heating system. It's a non-denominational facility. There is this whole idea, and somebody's supposed to be checking on separation of church and state, but it really, it's not a church per se. It goes back to 18-something. It is a historic building. And unless they fix the heat, we're going to lose it.
Which one is that?
It's out on Old Oak and Bucket Row.
Oh, near the intersection?
Yes.
Right in the town line.
Right. And it's been around forever. And the other.
Loans it?
You know, that's a really good question.
Why aren't they maintaining it? That would be my first question.
But they can't, it's just, it's a non-denominational group that just doesn't have any money, I guess.
They picked it up in church, but originally it was a meeting hall.
Right.
It's right at the split there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But originally it was a meeting hall, and that's how I think we ended up putting money into it before.
Yes.
We, the town?
We being CPC.
Oh, really?
It was.
And this is all under the sort of historic preservation component?
Yes. The other big item that we have, and it's big, is purchasing for $900,000 the Mordecai Lincoln property, which is just under five acres, overlooks the Gulf River.
Nicest view in town.
The best, one of the best views in town. There are three buildings on the property. The big issue is who is going to maintain it? And that's something that will be dealt with. The first goal is to buy it. Because the last thing we need is to have it developed into mega houses.
I would say you should resolve the maintenance when you buy it, not afterwards.
Well, there are two houses on the property. One will be, somebody lives there already and he will stay there and he will maintain, mow the lawn, endure all of that. And then the other house will ultimately be rented out as well. And funds coming from that will the other house will ultimately be rented out as well, and funds coming from that will...
Yeah, I just think, you know, been through a lot of, a lot of acquisitions of open space, and if you don't have a maintenance plan going in, it never shows up after you buy it.
Right. So, but I think we don't wanna let this one get by us. We really don't.
I'm just saying, you know, do it all at one time.
Okay, that's what I have.
Well, I went to border health, and it was the most lively border health meeting I've ever seen. It was very contentious.
Really?
It was very contentious. And how did you with grease traps?
With what?
Grease traps, restaurants. And the man who owns crust is challenging his funds.
Now, wait a minute, which restaurant?
It used to be Reva Pizza.
Reva Pizza.
Okay, okay.
Up in Driftwood.
Next to Sean Harris's.
Yeah, apparently he got, he got fined, and he had a late notice, and there's no, um, we don't have any set rules, and who says how deep the grease trap, it was, like I said, kind of exciting. I, I hate to say this, but I think he knew a little more than the person running the meeting. Um, so it went on for like almost two hours.
Wow.
This going on. So, I, I, I think that there's gonna be some, they're gonna have to go back and look at their, um, language about how deep a grease trap is supposed to be, and how often you're supposed to reuse stuff, and there was lots of dangling stuff left out that they're kind of...
Isn't that all in the building code? Grease traps?
It comes out, it comes out of border health.
I would think the original design of a grease trap is covered in the building code, right?
But that was one of those woozy-woozy things that nobody really put answers.
The sewer department makes comments on a project too, that, you know, the grease trap has to be, you know, functionally inspected, et cetera.
So, apparently this grease trap had not been inspected for seven years before this man bought it. So, that's, that's why we're in contention. But how come it's all my fault, and how come nobody else had to deal with it before?
Well, that's the point.
Yeah, it is.
Let me interrupt you. It is now nine o'clock.
Okay.
We have a, um, public hearing for an accessory dwelling, seven fifty-five First Parish Road.
So, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the special permit accessory dwelling for seven fifty-five First Parish Road. Map block lot thirty-two-dash-eighteen until March twelfth, twenty twenty at seven fifteen P.M. and to continue the time for action for filing with the town court until March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Alright. Action where we work.
That's it.
Second is the grease.
That's it for the grease. I mean, that's...
It's a slippery slope.
Like I said, yeah, it really was, and he was not happy.
I went to the housing trust.
How's that? Good. They're just really trying to get their plan. Uh, they've sent out bids to get the, because they need to new, update their plan, and, um, they got their bids in, and they...
They've selected the consultant, and we've, uh, we've sent the contract out, so all she needs to do is sign it. It's Karen Sannerborg. She's the one who did the last two housing production plans.
And what about Lawson Green? Did they talk about that?
No. Oh, they, I didn't stay for that. They were TPA the other night, but I, I don't know why.
And they're border swag as well. They tied up in paperwork. It's kind of a long, arduous journey.
I think that the closing is in the next day or so.
It's imminent.
It's imminent. Okay.
They're kind of working out, my understanding is, they're kind of working out the funds, how they're getting money to escrow and banks and those kinds of things. So, they're, they're trying to flush that out, but...
Because one point two, I think, is coming from CPC.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know how the money transfers, but it's kind of just trying to figure out how money is transferring from one place to another place.
It's always about the money.
And then, final, you know, review of documents. There's a couple, I don't know.
Alright, um...
It's like mass plumbing code is where you go for that. Just, just in case you wanna know.
Oh, okay. Alright. Um, let's have a quick discussion about the proposed signed bylaw amendments.
Does anybody have a chance to read it?
Oh, yes.
I must admit, I have not, so...
One, seven lashes. We read it and read it again.
So, I, um, talked with Judy today, and I decided that she, um, not to do one round of comments until after we, I heard from the board tonight, because I got some comments from the, uh, building department, and I had a few here myself. Um, a lot of this, I went and compared it to what's in our existing bylaw, and some of those stuff that, a lot of the stuff is the same, but she has made this, um, tried to conform to the case law. A couple things that, um, I wanted changed is on page three, um, D, sign waivers. Um, that, that's the ZBA. It's not planning board because...
Where's this?
Page three?
Page three.
D.
D.
The first, the first...
Oh, sign waivers?
Okay, sorry.
Sign wa, that's gonna be a ZBA because ZBA is special permit granting authority for all other aspects related to, uh, signs. Um, under prohibited signs, we're gonna take out tethered, floating, or inflated devices of any kind. I, building department feels that that's easier if we just take them all out. Um...
What does that mean? When easier, what does that mean? This is a prohibited sign, so they're saying these would not be prohibited.
Right. I mean, how do you regulate Frosty the Snowman? How do you regulate, um, that kind of stuff? It gets to be a little...
Flags.
Dicey, shall we say, with inflatable devices. Um...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so, um...
They're thinking of that guy that goes up and floats up and down.
So, we're just gonna, the building department feels it's just easier if we take it out of prohibited, um, devices. Um, in here, they're not gonna refer to a sign officer. They're gonna just have it building commissioner. Um, we are going to be changing, um, on page five, the districts, um, coordinating so that, um, there is no RM district, so that under seven-ten-point-nine. So, we're looking at the current zoning map and making sure the districts are all correct. Um, and a few other minor changes, um, that the building department wanted in here are reasonable. We're taking out, um, gaseous tubing, um, since, and internally illuminated references because we...
Where are you?
Um, I'm, under definitions.
Mm-hmm.
We're taking out those because we don't allow them, and so that's gonna be, um, taken out of here. Um, she has to go back and re-coordinate the definition under section two-hundred on sign so that, um, that with this, um, with this definition, so she will go back and do that before you get another, before you get another draft. But if anybody has any comments, if you could get them to me so that, then we can have another, another draft where she incorporates all your comments, building department's comments, um, you know, so I'd like to have probably a quick discussion at the next meeting because we'll be advertising, the advertising's gonna be due the next day. Um, or if not before then. But the advertising's gonna be general, you know, uh, change section two-hundred, replace, delete the entire section seven-ten, add a new section seven-ten. I mean, so...
I've got a question on ten-four C. Um, if you're worried about inflatable, it's saying revolving, moving, flashing.
Mm-hmm.
All I can think about is those new Christmas things that move all over the place, you know? You just put them in front of your house. It's a little...
But isn't a sign?
Well...
That's not a sign, is it?
It's not, it's not a sign, but if you're worried about frosty that someone's got, oh, just because that says inflatable devices.
Right, the other one had inflatable devices, which is what a lot of those are, and so that's why we decided...
Those are signs, though.
Well...
Like, a Christmas decoration is a sign?
No, but that's, they...
They don't want somebody to interpret that as a sign, which, a sign is not just something with, um, with, with lettering on it. It could be a picture. So, to make sure that there's no, you know, no chance of misconstruing, the building department just thought it'd be better to take it out. And Judy doesn't have a prob, Judy kind of agrees.
Okay, and so, do we not have to, um...
It seems like you take all these revisions out.
Those lights that, uh, those flashing ones that tell you how fast you're going? Hate those signs.
Or the ones of public safety.
Well, so that's, that's actually...
Text that goes...
The, no, so that's excluded in C, except for signs which supply public service information, such as time and temperature, but I would assume it would also say... Maybe it's someplace else. I don't know. But you know the ones I'm talking about that actually say how fast you're going. That's different than a traffic light. Traffic control signs.
It's exempt signs.
It's exempt.
Acutated flashing beacons on pedestrian things.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Seven-ten-point-five.
I'm concerned about, um, D, seven-ten-point-four-D, feather banners or, you know, that... Ribbons, streamers, spinners. We have...
Let's face it, there aren't any prohibited signs, right?
Right, I take that out.
I mean, you can make the case for anything that would be, you know, an exemption to the prohibited signs, so then the question is, why do we have prohibited signs?
Signs, so you can't have one of those wind socket-y things that, I mean, I don't wanna have them. Is that what that's referring to?
I'm not sure where this list came from, so, is it in our current regs?
No, it's not in our current regs. It's, it's, um, what she's been working on pretty much standardly throughout the state. So, you want me to question D?
D, yes.
Alright.
Signs on parked motor vehicles. Is somebody gonna actually enforce that for sale? The building commissioner's gonna go around and eliminate those? I mean, you could take this to the...
Inte degree.
Inte degree, you're right.
Do you have any comments? Just get them to me, please, sometime next week, so I can get it to her, so we can get another draft.
Okay, moving rapidly along, appointment of new design review committee member. What is your pleasure, people?
Um, I would...
I like the first name that we put up this year.
You like what?
The first name, which we really both...
Buckley?
Yes, Buckley.
I, I think I, I would vote, vote, actually, vote for Heather Marshall, who...
Is she the third person?
She was the second.
Which, which one?
Second, yeah, she was second.
And Patrice was the third.
There was, it's confusing because they're, I would say the architect, but they were all three of them were architects, so she was the second one.
But she, um, is doing work in town.
I have concerns with people working in town.
Yeah, I was gonna say that the third woman we had, the third person we had here, I thought she had great credentials.
Yes.
Obviously, they were all architects. I like the gentleman who was here tonight, but I, I think, if, if I had to think about it, I'd probably want some kind of architect on the...
His expertise is that doesn't fit to our process.
Yeah. I mean, he, he obviously has sort of expertise maybe in sort of managing the process, but what we're really looking for is the hardcore...
We're looking for the input, not managing the input.
Right, we're looking for the expertise.
Yeah.
And who was the, the third person? What was her name?
Paulette, Paulette O'Connell.
Paul, yeah.
She seemed more than competent. Um...
Of course, I don't have all the stuff from me.
Phil?
I'm kind of partial towards Buckley. I mean, I think with the exception of the, the last one, and nothing against him, it's his, where his expertise lies.
Yes.
I think he could all, all do the job.
Alright, um, Rebecca?
So, I wasn't there. I'm not gonna make a comment because I wasn't there.
Okay.
I left early that night.
Dan?
Um, I mean, I, I like Heather, but I, you know, I can be swayed if we need to get a majority, depending.
And the reason, what was the reason you all were saying that Heather, were you saying she works in town?
Yeah.
Oh.
But I'm not, I'm not so sure that Mrs. O'Connell does not work in town either.
They both work. They both work.
I was gonna say, I've seen our stamp.
They both don't work, work in town.
Well, then I can go with Mr. Buckley.
I just like his expertise with the historic stuff, which obviously I've been there to the results of what, what he can do.
And he works in Boston, not in situat. He has a BA in philosophy.
There you go, me too.
Alright.
Well, I, you know, I mean, he works in Boston now, right?
Right.
I mean, it looks like they all, at one time or another, worked in major cities, right? Cambridge, Charleston, Charlestown.
Goes with the job.
Yeah, I mean, they worked for big architectural firms, right? So... So, my question is, if, if you sort of put them all together, um, did everybody have sort of a feeling they both had enough, both commercial and residential? Because residential is, is useful in sort of a multi-family environment, right? But not as a standalone residential house, right, necessarily? You, because we don't, we don't spend much time in subdivisions looking at the architectural design, right, of the house?
Maybe we should.
But we generally look at site plans and, and all of that. And certainly for, like, Toll Brothers and for, um...
Drew.
Drew, we were looking at commercial, sort of what was more commercial, or Toll Brothers is like a multi-family, sort of commercial design, if you will. So, did you feel like everybody had similar sort of experience and expertise in that?
Phil?
Yeah, I, it was uncomfortable that. I, I happened like Buckley in his, his response to what he was talking about historically. He sat there and he said, he really didn't necessarily have hands-on, but this is his thought process.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and that made sense to me.
Okay. Ben, you want Heather?
Yeah, but, I mean, we don't have to agree.
Okay, Patty?
I say Mr. Buckley first.
And Steve?
Well, as I said, I think I was kind of with Paulette O'Connell.
We're all over the place.
Yeah, because I thought she had more, sort of the commercial architecture sort of background. It, it looks to me like, though, Heather does too, in terms of, um, some of the previous work she did. What do we think about John's background?
Are they out because of that?
No, I just think they have to recuse themselves for anything they're working on, right?
Either that, or they go before the selectmen and they obtain special...
Employee status.
Special employee status.
But he might still design review stuff that would go to DRC, which probably isn't... They might work on something that comes to us, like accessory dwellings and stuff, but I don't know about, I don't know.
You know, I like the fact that, you know, his publications, The Greenest Home, I mean, he's into passive house design.
System building.
Yes, which is where we're, we're trying... Yes, which is where we're, we're trying to.
It looks like a lot of, almost all of his experiences, Ben, was in New York.
Yeah, he told us that.
Right.
But there are people from New York.
Yeah.
I'm not thinking of value judgment. I'm talking about expertise.
Yeah, really.
Don't judge you by one city.
There was a lady up in Blueberry, Bluebird Lane, who came back out and it was something before the board. And the board voted the way that she wants. She was very passionate about it. The board voted the way she wanted it to go. And she came up, she thanked me because she, her biggest fear in life was that people come from New York and try to take over the planning board. And I looked and there was David, myself, I forget, there were four, four of the five members were on the.
All from New York.
All from New York. Yes.
All right.
Okay. And, and they're all, are they all registered architects in Massachusetts? Can't tell. These two are. John is and Paulette.
He's very.
I'm assuming Heather is too.
Heather is a registered architect in Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts as well, so. I mean, they all sort of have credentials, right?
Well, and Buckley's familiar with zoning language and rules, which is a plus.
Well, she kind of surprised me. She said, well, I read all of the bylaws before I moved. Okay.
Yeah. I like Buckley, so.
When is the next opening?
Probably, um, Hal Stokes is up in, in November. So I, I don't know how he's feeling right now. We haven't had a design review committee because there hasn't, meeting because there hasn't been a project. But I think he wavered last time.
He what?
He, he wavered about re-upping. He did.
Yeah, he was sort of on the fence, I think.
Yeah. But there really hasn't been a lot to review at the moment. I, I think that's going to change when we start getting projects in for the rest of Green Bush. So I do think it's going to change.
And it will change if we do get some teeth for the historic reservation as well, right?
I don't know. I don't know if we would send it to the design review committee here. We'd send it to the historic committee here.
And then ensure to go back to.
It depends on what type of project you have.
All right, let's just bring this to a close. Got to make a motion for Buckley.
I move to appoint Mr. Buckley to the design review committee.
Is there a second?
I'll talk to him.
All those in favor say aye.
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 No, I was supporting.
I know.
Paulette, so nay.
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 Nay, so it's three to two. It's Mr. Buckley. Thank you very much.
I would, I would just comment that I think everyone, we had a really good batch of people that came out and that. For those that applied, I applaud their enthusiasm to get involved in that.
I think Mr. Coogan, who was in here to see us, the last one, I think he would be great on economic development.
Yep, or Public Buildings Commission.
Public Buildings, yes. So.
Facilities.
I'm going to call him myself.
All right.
Okay, all right, we have planning and development. We're busy, busy, busy.
Busy, busy, busy. So I told you about the February 25th at the selectmen's meeting. I told you that the email today says the water update study is going to be presented at the selectmen's hearing on the floor. I told you about the zoning articles, seaside at Cituate, the first occupancy is supposed to be next week. I haven't received a final plan yet with our certification on it, but I'm told it's coming.
I've been told that there are people working in those buildings at midnight, inside.
They better not be. The time is 10 o'clock. Nobody's complained.
Okay.
Nobody's complained on that one.
All right.
But I've been told, I mean, so they better not be.
Okay, and then?
I sent them, I sent them an email tonight saying, make sure you're buttoned up for the storm for this weekend because we're anticipating an inch of rain.
In about eight hours.
So hopefully they've swept the streets tomorrow and they've got the whole pump situation all squared away by now.
And you and I, we will walk Townsend on Sunday morning.
I mean, and so next week we're meeting with, we have a couple of meetings. One with Curse Estates People, have a meeting on, we're still working on stormwater regulations. So I have a meeting with Josh Bowes and Amy Waki, the conservation agent on that, before we have one final meeting with the working group. And then hopefully this spring we get it to the planning board. And you'll know that it's been a couple of years worth of work into this thing. And senior center is going along. They had pre-construction meeting last week and.
I see they put this, the traffic sign up, huh? The speed.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Speed sign?
I didn't notice.
Yeah, it's up across the street.
Okay, I know they ordered one, so it was supposed to go in.
I saw it tonight.
And so that's kind of where we are. We remain very busy. Next meeting is going to be, we, we have a site plan review and two, theoretically two subdivision, definitive subdivisions for the, for the zoning freeze along with.
Are these definitive subdivisions that don't get built?
Yeah, yes.
Is that what's coming in?
Did Jeff buy into my suggestion on the?
Ah, yes, he did. And so we're working on language on, on that and.
What, what it says is basically it's a paragraph that's just there and says that even though the thing, there were, certain waivers are made now, that doesn't mean if we don't, if we get additional information in the future that we can withdraw the, withdraw that.
Mm-hmm.
So if you put that out, then basically it's just there and says whatever follow may or may not ever be.
Makes sense. Big coming in, right? Any big, no more big developments?
Not that I know of at the moment.
Please, no.
Yeah, you never know what's going to come in.
Money for the bees.
In Green Bush. I mean.
Well, the, the housing trust, they would just love somehow to find a little more land or another house to put in. Actually, there is a piece of land.
About the old senior center?
Yeah, at the corner of Eli and Hathaway Road, that a former selectman wanted, it's owned by the town. He went to the building inspector. It meets all of the setbacks for an affordable unit. And he wanted to do it in conjunction with Habitat for Humanity. But one of the members of the board of selectmen said, oh, well, you know, no, we want that, the money, blah, blah, blah. And it's never been sold and it still sits there. So that is the thought. Why did they, what do they want the money for? It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It's a new board. It's, do people change all the time? No, no.
They want tax revenue.
So it's a small, so it's a smaller.
Yes.
Oh, they want tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, if you want that, then you sell it. It hasn't been sold. So it would not impact much of anything. How big's the lot? It is buildable. At Eli at Hathaway? The corner of Eli and Hathaway.
Where is the Eli?
Off of Hathaway.
Like, wait, give us.
Well, I know.
Like if this is Egypt. Past my house, towards Hathaway's country club.
Oh, okay.
On the right hand side.
Oh, there it is, right there.
Yeah, it's weird. It's like a two, two-sided street, so I don't know which corner they mean.
Yeah, one of those isn't.
I know, oh, no, I know.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Eli goes down to, to the water, but then again, you have to go upward road and Eli goes in again.
Yeah.
Right.
It's very strange.
It's a very strange road. No, maybe right there.
Mm-hmm.
There's that other lot right around the corner from there that I don't know if it's.
Which one?
I don't know that it's actually buildable, but this is what we've talked about. If you could put a smaller house there, or maybe I've talked about in the health trust. Across the street on Hathaway Road, they put in those three new houses.
The big jobs.
Yep, and there's a small pe, what, I just was like snooping around on the assessor's map one day and I feel like there's a small piece of property back there that they would, no one would let them build on. It might be, it might not conform somehow, but maybe if you would put an affordable unit there.
Does it have frontage?
Not 100% sure about that.
This part, like across Major Beach Park Mall?
No. It's not there.
Okay, I'll entertain Bill's motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.